Please call and roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark. Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item number four, Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at City Council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 20th, 2024. Item B, Approval of Minutes of the Special Meeting of March 7th, 2024. Item C, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $347,269.99 and Payroll Expenses of $228,483.38. And Item D, Approval of ASAP Energy Invoice for the Price of $27,256.15, and that's for the field of the year.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Reports from staff. No Planning Commission Meeting. Item D, Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on February 27th.
Okay, Senior Life Solution Program is progressing. Addison Roberts, the new general surgeon, was onboarded on 2/27. The new mammogram unit is slated for install the 1st of March. They're interviewing three nurse practitioners, and with one of those three already hired to help with the urgent care. They are partnering with NWSU, as nurses are exceedingly hard to find. Survival Flight Membership Drive went very well, and case law is going to require a vote of the people for the sale of the nursing home, and June 18th, I believe, is the earliest date that that can happen.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you, Greg. Next item, Seat, the Public Library Board Meeting on March 11th. Mr. Dowling?
Unfortunately, work was able to...I was unable to attend the library meeting, but I talked to Ms. Sandra. So, were you able to?
I have not. We have a budget meeting.
I have a report from her after seeing it. The major thing is the discussion of the library budget, which, on one line item, will be increased by $5,000 over the last year to do for equipment that has been put off for purchasing, and another line item will be reduced by about $2,000. And those are kind of, I guess, the overall summary of the budget meeting. The other thing is, we reviewed some food policies. We allowed certain drinks and concessions to happen on a certain part of the library that has now been carpeted, so we have restricted that and moved that and basically clarified that language so that it is not included in the new carpeted area of the library. The E-Rate filings, 471 filing, occurred. We have some reports for grants to provide new purchases, bookshelves and some desks. And approximately 250 people were able to attend the library's 60th anniversary. Outside of that, I think that covers it. Oh, this is kind of coming down the line as the budget discussion happens. There was a leak within the youth library, the public library, that needs to kind of be sought out. I believe Sandra has reported that, and we're waiting to see how big of an issue that will be. There's some issue with the pipe insulation is what will be the greatest determining factor of the amount that needs to be replaced, and probably the overall cost of the project. But luckily, no books were damaged, so.
Any questions for Mr. Dowling? The Arena Authority Meeting on March 5th.
So, just like they kind of usually do, they did most everything in executive session. They had their financial report from Mr. Holder, and then went into executive session, and they came out of executive session and basically adjourned. So, it was not a whole lot to report from their authority arena.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? Next item is Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on February 21st. Mrs. Beer?
Okay, we had several requests. All of them were approved. They included the 28th Annual Northwestern Football Golf Tournament, 5th Annual Northwestern Summer Baseball Tournament, Alba Crazy Cool Ball Boulevard Cruise, the Big Cruise and Car Show, Neskotunga Golf Tournament, the Northwest Oklahoma Youth Winter Rodeo Association, and the 2024 Neskotunga Arts Festival and Sugar Show. And we do have a meeting this Wednesday at 5:30.
Any questions for Mrs. Beer? The Airport Commission Meeting, got a couple items on this agenda regarding that for the jet fuel tanks, and also regarding a vehicle declaration of surplus, and we'll get to that later. The other items were regarding routine business and then going out for bid on CDs. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? Our Park and Recreation Meeting on March 13th. Mrs. Swallow?
We had a pretty routine meeting, not anything really extra, but the turf project is going well now that we have decided to extend the drainage pipes out, and there was no delay in doing that, and forms are being placed at the swimming pool.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Cemetery Meeting on March 14th. Mr. Reed, would you share your report with us?
We met and we approved the recommended policy for green burial that should hopefully be voting on later this evening. The...I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name. John the New Sexton, since he has taken over, I have only received positive comments. Of course, I know the grass is basically dead right now, but this is since he's taken over, all I've gotten is positive comments on the condition of the appearance of the cemetery, so that's it.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Finance Committee Meeting on March 18th. Mr. Winters?
We're pretty well right on pace in basically all of our funds on where we would expect to be. ADA is still a little bit screwed up just because of all of the donations and expenditures that are planned in that with the pool and the turf project and all of those things. But overall, about where we would expect to be for this time of year, sales and use tax collections last month, $404,948.81, which is down almost 5.5% from last year and 1% from the month before, but still, I believe, above where we were budgeted, kind of where we budgeted to be. So, cash balances largely flat. I think it was about a $40,000 difference, if I remember right. Yeah, about a $40,000 difference in where we were last month, so our cash position still looks pretty solid.
Any questions for Mr. Winters? Thank you. As far as the mayor's report is concerned, I think probably Steve will end up covering about everything I want to cover, so I'll just let Steve do it.
All right. Excuse me. So, Locust Street Water Line Replacement is moving right along. They've got all the line laid on the 7 and 8 herd blocks, and so now they're cutting in the service lines from the...from the south side of the road to the north side of the road. I think they've only got...of course, when I was there today, they took that five left on Locust on the 7 herd block, but they already had two of them dug up that were connecting, so they may only have like three left on the 7 herd block, and I think there's six on the 8 herd block, and so they'll be done, hopefully by the end of this week. They're able to get a couple through lines in a day. So, it's moving along a lot. So, we're going nicely, so.
Steve, once that's done, can they start paving that road back up?
We're going to try to figure out a way to do that. Right now, it's too cold to use asphalt unless we find a way to bring it here from over to Cherokee to keep it hot enough to go through our machine. But we're looking into it.
Okay.
We're actively trying to find a way to get that thing fixed. I'd rather asphalt it than just go out with chip steel.
Yeah. No, we need to do it right.
But so, the new water meter installation is currently kind of at a standstill, waiting on some parts to...for some of the large meters that are...we just have to have some extensions on them to be able to connect them to the water lines. So, those are in order, and they should be coming in anytime soon. As Ms. Swallow mentioned, the turf project is back on track. Hopefully, get the Northwestern Field done here real soon so that the Lady Rangers can play a few home games this year. Once again, sound like a broken record, but the new city website and city app is up and live, so make sure you tell all your friends and neighbors to download the city app. As Ms. Swallow mentioned, the swimming pool project's moving right along as well. It's right on track, maybe a little bit ahead of track. So, still waiting to get...find out about this land and water conservation grant. If we get that money, then we can start a bath house too and do all this stuff simultaneously. Still waiting, but if we can get somebody from a public...
Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, yeah. Parks and Tourism.
Tourism and Recreation.
Return of Coldwood.
Oklahoma.
In Oklahoma. Currently negotiating with the President's directive, so I think we've got a good way forward if we both agree. Hopefully, have something to bring back to council next month, so we get that stuff finalized and going. Your Public Service Announcement, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala is April 4th. Best of luck to those from City that have been nominated. We've got two for the Public Safety Person of the Year, and then Direct Centers for the Entertainment Venues of the Year, so pretty charming from Alba. It's still budget season, so we're looking to try to hold the budget retreat. We initially threw out Saturday, April 13th, but I already know that won't work for Mrs. Beer, so just individually, if you'll shoot me an email, let me know what you're available at, it looks like, on Saturdays in April, and maybe even Friday, a Friday evening. If we can't get four hours on a Saturday morning, we'll try to do it on Friday evening. Not that I want to do that, but I'd rather do it on Saturday morning. So, let me know what your Saturdays look like for April. I think you said, what, the 27th was open for you? So, that might be...
I'll be gone, and my wife comes back from China the day before that, so we're in the city. You know, I think in the interest of just having as many of us there as possible, if not a Friday evening, maybe it's another evening during the week as well, just to be able to have a full body, as full a body as possible.
So, it will work out, but you'll be seeing emails back and forth through this week, so. And I went and attended the American Oasis Ribbon Cutting last Friday. That place was crazy with just all sorts of people over there, but it's a pretty cool venue, so if you had a chance to go over there and check it out, I highly recommend it. It was a neat ribbon cutting and just a ton of people and so many UTVs, and that's funny. But it'll be good for...we're open, and I think it'll be good for Alba as well. That's all I've got.
I will add, with regard to the budget meetings we had last week with the department heads, we also heard from our insurance carrier, and it does look like we're going to be able to have a flat budget for insurance premiums and possibly a decrease with hopefully a lower deductible. That's going to be big for...last year was a big number in the budget, and hopefully we don't see an increase this year. We should not see an increase this year. I can't make any guarantees on that until the numbers actually come in, but our projections are favorable.
Any questions for Mr. Ford?
Yeah, excuse me. How are the new meters performing? I was getting a lot of negative feedback at the start. I haven't received any negative feedback lately. Are they starting to...
They're performing as advertised, and they finally got all the batch files in the computer. They have a lot less manual reads and use the system to pick up the signal as intended. Now, they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're actually pretty handy because that meter will tell you if there's a leak on the hub over the side or not. It's pretty...it's pretty cool. Our guys are training them to look at, so you know if you've got a leak in there somewhere. Man, I don't know where, but yeah, they're performing as advertised.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you, Steve. Item 7, Remarks and Inquiries by Citizens. If anyone would like to make a remark or an inquiry, I will ask you to approach the podium and state your name and have you identify yourself. With their being known, we'll move on. Item number 8, Discussion and Action Regarding Approval of Engagement Letter for Accounting and Consulting Services with Crawford and Associates PC for Fiscal Year 24-25, Authorize the Mayor or City Business Manager to Sign All Necessary Documents. Engagement letter is in your packet. It's largely consistent, almost entirely consistent with what we did last year with Crawford. Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, it's like you said, it's almost exactly the same words as last year, just a different date.
And just for, in case everybody...in case anybody needs an update, Crawford and Associates prepare our monthly financial statements. They prepare all of our statements and documents for our auditors when they...for the audit that we have annually, and this is the letter that will engage them for services next fiscal year.
I'd make a motion to approve the engagement letter for accounting and consulting services with Crawford and Associates PC for FY 24-25, and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the engagement letter for accounting and consulting services with Crawford and Associates PC for Fiscal Year 24-25, and authorize the mayor or business manager to sign all necessary documents. Any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Item 9 is Discussion and Action to Approve Change Order Number One to the City of Alba Regional Airport, Rehabilitate Runway 1836 Lights and Pappy's Project for $23,376. This is a reduction in the cost of the project, and it's for materials that were not needed.
Make a motion to approve Change Order One to the City of Alba Regional Airport, Rehabilitate Runway 1836 Lights and Pappy's Project for $23,376.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mr. Bowman to approve Change Order Number One for the airport runway lights, as stated in the agenda, for a reduction of $23,376. Is there any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Item 10 is Discussion and Action to Approve the Modified Lease Purchase Agreement with NBC Bank for Type II Ambulance with total purchase price of $176,700 and an annual lease purchase payment of $30,484.4, authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. Mr. Ford?
So, moving on, I got three quotes. Alba State came in at 5.56% interest, Bank Central 6.5%, and NBC Bank came in at 4.95%. So, that's why we chose to go with NBC Bank, because it's the best interest and good.
It seems pretty high for a Type II price for a Type II ambulance.
I totally budgeted that, too, though.
Is it...it looked like something...is there something driving it up above the base price?
I don't know.
We budgeted $180,000 for a Type II.
For a Type II. I'd rather have...I mean, I'd rather see us getting some Type IIs. I just don't like going out and having to get alone on it, but...
Is that something when you buy an ambulance? I mean, do you...have you already picked out the ambulance that is that exact price? Is that...okay.
What brand is it? Is it a Braun or Osage or...
I think it's a Braun.
It's a Braun. But those are pretty expensive. That's one of the more expensive brands.
Was it a Chaparral of Arkansas, something called?
Same place we got to.
Yeah.
Now, what year is the ambulance that was replacing?
Oh, it was replacing? It's an old, old one. It's a...actually, it was, she told me, the other day. I gotta get back to you once you know.
Do we have...so, any idea how many mi...I mean, what's wrong with it besides age? What's wrong with it?
Age and a lot of miles on it, and it's just the features on it just aren't as...not just enough as what these new ones are.
So, how...
Maintenance, too.
Yeah, it's maintenance problem.
How many ambulances, I mean, do we run?
When they're running.
There's a four?
Yeah, a four. When they're running. We've got one that's in the shop that shouldn't have come out today. Had it blown, turbo, I don't know how long ago.
That's one that's over at Shaker's, I guess.
But they got it back up and running. Ryan's gonna be checking it out, pick it up today, so.
Does anyone have the auto load system on it, like...
It does, but we don't have a cop for it yet, so...
I knew those were pricey.
But we're gonna advise her to get some cots for that, and then that's your budget. Yeah, they aren't pricey, they're really expensive. But it's got an end, so let me get the cop for it or work.
Will be ready for us.
Yeah.
I want to say, if I'm not mistaken, in seven, eight years that I've been on council, this would be the third ambulance we've bought of the board, and we still have one at least that is pretty old.
I can't remember the dates. I can't either. I couldn't tell you for sure either.
Like, one point, they said one of them was like a '95 or a '98. It was in the 90s.
Well, and the first one that we bought was used when we bought it.
Yeah, it wasn't even brand new.
And that, that I've been on council for. What's the...do we know what the lifespan of an ambulance like this, I mean, how long approximately before we are looking out? I mean, why another one?
We've run them for many, many years, probably longer than life expectancy. It all depends on how many runs they take and how many, you know, miles or hours that they're running, but, you know, one of our...one of the things we're trying to accomplish is to have more value in our vehicles when it comes time to get new ones so that we actually have trade-in value.
Yeah.
Right now, we have very little trade-in value. We'll declare a surplus and sell, you know, what we're taking out of the fleet, but they'll have very little value to another ambulance company.
But, I mean, it's something that's gonna last long, not long. It's after it's paid off, it's still...it's not like, I mean...
It's got a warranty.
Okay.
What's the warranty? You remember? But it properly maintained, they should...it should last up, you know, with...I'm gonna say, any vehicle that was manufactured after 2020, probably was kind of a crapshoot whether or not it was manufactured, you know, well or not, and so we're...but I think that's any vehicle, whether you're buying one for yourself or otherwise, we can't make any guarantees on how long this will last.
Were there any considerations for other types of ambulances at different prices or anything like that before we settled on this one?
Well, we voted specifically for Type II.
Okay. I know, I just didn't know, like, if we just settled on the Braun one, that specific expense or a different type of Type II.
No, I think this is about the only one you could find that was available in a reasonable timeframe, so they're hard to come by right now, so.
I entertain a question.
What would be the cost difference on another brand? I mean, are you talking $10,000 last year or are you talking a difference of $80,000 plus? I mean, what is that price gap? Does anyone know?
Well, look, I don't know what the brand was. It's $111,000 recently, I know a recent purchase.
So, about 60-ish?
$111,000, $111,440.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for supporting them and making sure that our citizens have the best equipment they can to take care of our citizens, but I'd like to personally see, you know, three different levels and pros and cons instead of settling for what seems to be the...or going with what seems to be the most expensive. I mean, I know at times it makes sense to spend more, but at times it makes sense to look at something that's a little bit more affordable, but I'm not a...I know we have two people here who know a lot more about ambulances than me, so I'm just, you know...
I know, from what she's told me, that she has looked for a long time for a replacement for this year, and she hadn't...when I talked to her, it's probably been a couple months ago since I talked to her, and she hadn't found anything, so...
We did approve this.
Yes.
A year.
So, I was surprised to see this on here because I knew that she had told me it was hard to find, so I think that we're doing good to find one.
I just thought we approved that we were gonna buy it outright, was my perception, and I didn't realize we were gonna go out and take out a load on it.
If we're gonna buy it outright, we're not gonna buy it. We don't have...we don't have enough in the budget to do that. We budgeted a lease purchase agreement is what we budgeted. We can buy it outright, but if we buy it outright, we'll have to give up something else.
I'll make a motion to approve the Modified Lease Purchase Agreement with NBC Bank for a Type II ambulance with a total purchase price of $176,700 and an annual lease purchase payment of $30,484.4, and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents.
I second that.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Mrs. Swallow to approve the Modified Lease Purchase Agreement with NBC Bank for a Type II ambulance with total purchase price of $176,700, an annual lease purchase payment of $30,484.4, and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. Any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
No, and I will clarify, it's not that I'm...I am not against buying an ambulance, but I just would like more information on what else is available and stuff like the warranty. I don't feel comfortable approving something this large without more information.
Dowling.
Uh, no.
Winters.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Bear.
Yes.
Item 11, A Discussion and Action to Designate Block 22 of the City of Alba Cemetery as a Green Burial Only Block. I know that the cemetery board has been discussing this for well over a year. Lenny, do you have anything you'd like to share with the council before they take some action?
Well, this will be...we cannot sell plots ahead of the need. If a person decides to do green burial, they have 24 hours to do that without being embalmed, and if they are embalmed, there's some technical stuff there that they can do. Be placed in a shroud, on a biodegradable board, put or planted into the ground and allowed to deteriorate. And at the time, Mr. Greavy talked about a sensor or something would be placed kind of in the chest, on top of the chest area, and they would go from that, be able to pinpoint, so if a relative wanted to come up and see exactly where they're at, they could do that, and they would go four feet over to the middle of the next grave site. There would be no monuments, nothing. There will be a...and I'll probably mispronounce it.
Cenotaph.
A cenotaph with names and dates on it at, like at the back or somewhere like that, so there would be that little bit.
How close together are they?
That answers your question, but it's...
How close together are they?
They'll be right next to each other, four feet. And it's the lot...or Plot 22 is the furthest northwest area of the field on the northwest area of the cemetery.
So, how will they know where to dig?
They've got that little sensor.
How about how many people can be buried in that section roughly?
60. Well, the number 60 comes to mind, but what he's talking about is a surveyor's pin, which you pick up with your metal detector, and because you can't drive over the grave because there's no fault, we have to start at the back, go left to right, and that's why you can't buy it in advance, because we couldn't roll over other graves to get to the back. The cenotaph would probably be at the front of the plot, and you do not have to put your name on it if you don't want to. We'll have a record here in City Hall, but you could have your name and your dates of birth and death on the plaque. And we did our research. Bill Bernhardt has a green cemetery in Stillwater, and he said over a 10-year period, he's had 26 interments. So, it's not a high-volume area, but there are people in this community that are in area, but there are people in this community that are interested in this type of final resting place.
And I know I personally have been, at least four ladies have talked to me, and I know a gentleman wanted the green burial, but the policy had not been approved after his spouse passed away. So there is some need for it.
There's a lot of gypsum rock, and I'm not sure about that spot. And I saw in the rules that it's not supposed to have power equipment. Who's gonna dig it if it's open?
No, you can use power equipment. You just can't drive over an existing grave. So we'll start on the back row, go left to right, right to left, and dig them as they are needed. So yes, we will allow power equipment.
How about the mowing of this area?
It'll only be mowed around the edge, the area itself that allowed to be natural.
Okay.
Your policy says it'd be mowed one time a year.
Would that be enough to prevent a fire hazard to the cemetery or the city? Isn't it like a drought year when everything's kind of dead and dry?
But it also says the exterior perimeter will be mowed as necessary for fire prevention.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which, bad man, it'll work. Short grass burns about as quick as tall grass does, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a fire hazard where everyone.
More, so more fire hazard than a rain? I mean, it's gonna cause an additional fire hazard out there, is what you're saying.
Yeah, tall grass is, is an additional fire hazard, but.
It's, it won't cause an additional fire hazard, but there'll be more fuel.
Can we water?
Our, the cemetery boards had these conversations. Would you guys care to share?
There won't be any damage to grave markers if there's a fire. That's why we are, uh, wanting that area mowed, the ten-foot around, is kind of a barrier, fire barrier. Of course, you know, when the wind blows, it's gonna carry cinders.
Yeah.
Have we ever had fires in the day?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I would say probably.
We've allowed controlled burns.
We have done that.
With fire?
Yes, we have done that in, in advance of fireworks, yes.
And quite frankly, that area could be burned completely without any controlled burn, without any fear of, of damaging anything. So actually, it might be safer in the long run if you needed to have a controlled burn.
So it can still be burned, is that correct?
Yeah, that's not disrespectful.
I mean, 'cause my, my concern from a fire standpoint is, is okay, I'm not mowing it, and now I'm driving it back over to dig a grave. So, I mean, that's where the fire concern would come from.
There's not any further questions. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and designate block twenty-two of the City of Alba Cemetery as a green burial-only block.
Second. I have a motion from Mrs. Beer, and a second from Mr. Winters to designate block twenty-two of the, of the City of Alba Cemetery as a green burial-only block. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion in action to approve the City of Alba Cemetery green burial rules and regulations. I think some of those were just discussed. Any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
I hope you weren't talking about the, the cost associated with this.
Uh, the, the, the rates are set in policy, so we won't have to do ordinance changes to, to modify the rates. I mean, if we, if we find that, you know, these rates are insufficient to cover the cost, then we can modify the, the rates without changing local ordinance.
Are the rates taking?
I think the board will be looking at a possible rate increase, possibly in our next coordination. And if so, it would reflect with changes to this document.
Are you talking about across the board or just for the green burial?
No, across the board.
Is this consistent with the, what's the normal rate?
Yes, this is what's customary in, in the cemetery. And I, I think it's interesting on this one line, it says, "It will look like a grassy meadow with tall grass and wild flowers. The flowers are not guaranteed."
What, what is the funeral homes? What are their capabilities to deal with a person that?
They had input, and we considered their input in developing the policy. There was no major resistance from either funeral home here in Alba.
So the, the funeral homes are not obligated to offer this service, but if they choose to, they have a plot in our cemetery which they can.
And that, so that make, the embalming part makes us a lot easier because state law, if they weren't bombed, you got twenty-four hours to get them in the ground, or they gotta be refrigerated. We don't have refrigeration capabilities here in Alba, either one of the funeral homes. So that's why the embalming piece was so important, to make sure we get them bombed and gives time to get them in the ground.
Is there any way, and I don't, not that, maybe it has been considered, but, and I don't know if we can even change this, but if like the, the fire chief or fire marshal, you know, if we're in a severe burn ban, that, you know, they have the authority to say, hey, you know, it'd be a good time to mow that area. Is there something we could look at with that, or would that chain ruin your whole green burial, I mean, something like that?
No. A true green cemetery, they don't allow heavy equipment. They are dug by hand. And of course, we have a gypsum layer there, so that's.
And I have to.
The fire chief always has that ability to declare something a hazard.
Okay, so even if it's on here, he believes it's a hazard, we can mow it?
Yeah, of course, I'd get a hold of the cemetery.
Of cour-, yeah.
Where, where we're gonna do it.
Of course, yeah.
I don't know, is that accurate?
It sounds accurate, in my understanding.
Okay.
What, I'm sorry, I'm lost. The fire chief can authorize a burn?
Authorize it to be mowed.
Oh, mowed.
That's, that's what you grab these yards that are overgrown or things, kind of like.
Well, but that's called a hazard. I don't know, Joe. I don't know the answer to that question.
I, I, I mean, I feel like if it, if it's in here, it'd be a lot, I don't, but that's just my, my thoughts. I don't want to ruin anybody's rest.
We, we established that a controlled burn of this area, though, would be permissible, correct? So in the event that if they were afraid of their becoming of a fire issue, then there could be a, a truck parked there as we burn off the top layer.
Yeah.
There could be steps taken to do that. Unless there's a state like burn ban. I don't think they can override that, but.
Well, my only worry is digging the hole. I would hate to be the sexton, say, here, that's a green plot. Here's your shovel, go at it. Especially with the gypsum.
But they're allowing a backhoe.
Yeah, you can use.
They, they said they could use a backhoe.
You can get a backhoe in there.
Okay.
Yeah. They said that's the only.
They just can't run it over the top of the burial site.
And frankly, with any intermittent use and the possibility of running into a previous burial, even with the greatest of care.
Is it vertically or horizontal?
It's horizontal.
And unlike California, we are not stacking yet.
Oh, gosh.
However, I, I think I, I heard the discussion that if it was a, a double burial, that possibly you would. Maybe not. I may have misunderstood that.
I tried to visualize that.
A two-foot. Heaven forbid, Mr. and Mrs. Parker died in a fiery crash, and, you know, most of the, you know, would be taken care of maybe by then, but if we.
You don't want to be stacked?
We could possibly be stacked.
She might not care for that.
Well, if you're cremated, we now allow, I believe it's three cremations in a plot.
Okay, maybe that's what I was hearing.
Okay. Well, that makes more sense. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alba Cemetery green burial rules and regulations.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the City of Alba Cemetery green burial rules and regulations. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and thank you to the board for all the time that they put into this, and staff as well. Item thirteen, discussion in action to liquidate a 2016 Freightliner M-2106 for a price not less than sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and use proceeds to purchase an appropriate-sized JDA fuel truck, and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. This Freightliner was, was purchased to put a new fuel truck, to be a new fuel truck. And upon delivery, the specs aren't particularly with regard to height, total vehicle height, once the tank is on there, it's not gonna work at our airport. So we have the vehicle, and by whatever means, we would seek to liquidate it at a price not less than what we paid for it. And we have confidence that we'll be able to do that.
Do they know what size they need now? So if they sell this, they know exactly what they can go buy?
Yeah. Well, we knew what size we needed before. We just didn't, it wasn't delivered according to.
Okay.
The, this one would require well more fabrication to get it down to the height than we need it to be.
I'll make a motion to liquidate the 2016 Freightliner M-2106 for a price not less than sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and use the proceeds to purchase an appropriate-sized JDA fuel truck, and authorize the city mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bowman, and a second by Mr. Winters to liquidate the 2016 Freightliner M-2106 for a price not less than sixty-eight thousand nine hundred, with proceeds used to purchase an appropriate-sized JDA fuel truck, and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item fourteen, discussion in action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-006, a resolution of the City Council amending the FY 2324 annual budget for the City of Alba. Is this the last page?
This is our fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay, so this is moving money that had been brought in for the, from the tourism tax in years past, putting that into this year's budget so that they could spend it. Those dollars are restricted in purpose. They can't be used for anything but tourism and convention activities, and so this moves that from their fund balance into their budget so that they can use that for events and, and actually amendments to the agreement with the chamber for their, that's their visit Alba website, advertising, publications, and whatnot.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-006.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2024-006. Is there any further discussion?
What, I guess, has came about that's so much more than was originally planned for? Is it just more events happening, or?
We got a couple new events this year, like that Northwest Rodeo Association, that's a brand-new event, and there was one earlier in the year. And costs have gone up. We've seen a small increase in most requests by two to three percent. There's been a couple deductions, but for the most part, they're requesting more money.
So I guess, is this, so were they budgeted what they were?
We, we basically moved that fund balance. We just haven't done it yet.
Okay. So, so their current, the current amount was what we're budgeting to take in, and so this is over what we budgeted? Is that?
No, we budgeted, we knew what they're gonna, what they're gonna, or pretty much we knew what they're gonna get out this, this year. And it's been pretty close to what we thought, but we've also hard that to get them that much money to transfer from fund balance into their account, and we just haven't done it yet.
I guess my question is, is this like the, what we originally budgeted before this, I mean, is that the amount that we plan to take in? Is this over? I mean, that's.
Let's pull budgets up, and I can speak knowledgeably after that. Tourism budget? Because we shouldn't need to do a resolution if we already budgeted it. I don't think we budgeted it.
You made great notes of that.
What I remember, I don't believe we did budget it, but we knew it was there and we needed.
That's.
I believe that was the discussion that we had.
The tourism funds, they are able to, they, they have the legal authority to spend every dollar that they have in cash and every dollar that they bring in. And so did we budget it? So we didn't have a transfer. We have a zero budget for transfer from fund balance, and so this budget resolution will put, what was it, ninety?
Three thousand, I think.
Ninety-nine thousand, or, excuse me.
Amendment is ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and four cents.
If I remember the history correctly on all of this, there was discussion of the possibility of needing it, but the deadlines to adjust the budget prior to approval, it wasn't practical to get it in the current budget because of approval deadlines with the state of Oklahoma. So in the event that we needed to come back and spend this fund balance, we anticipated the need for this, this budget amendment. And now, here we are today in the need of this budget amendment.
Pull that back up, Steve.
That is what I recall as that conversation.
Okay, so line fifteen five 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 three oh three. I can't read that.
Handle budget of one ninety-one four four seven.
She's already made these.
We're gonna have to.
She already made the moves, Kelly.
She already made the move. Then go down to five 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 three five nine.
Just, as a reminder of the day, we've charged all, all the contract to, that was supposed to come out of five two five nine?
No, we've already proffered classified it.
I recommend we table this. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
There's already a motion on the table.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then, if you think we should table this, vote no.
My recommendation would be, as the first you can make a motion, to vote no.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
No.
Bear?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Swallow?
No.
Parsons?
No.
Bowman?
No.
Okay, so what I will say, and this probably, this really doesn't even, pull that back up, Steve. I need to explain. You ready to close it?
It's okay. You're down to five oh three?
Yeah, go down to those lines, whatever it was. So if three oh, or five oh three, or three oh three, where it now says a budget of a So if 303, or 503, or 303, where it now says a budget of 191, which hadn't been approved yet, but it says 191,447, that, the approved budget says 99,791. If you go down to line 359, it says zero on the screen, but the approved budget is 42,000. So if this is a matter of having paid the professional services contract with the Chamber of Commerce out of line 303, this is a simple, put it in the proper box, because it shouldn't have come out of tourism and conventions, line item 303. It should have come out of professional services, line 359. And so my recommendation is that this will not come back to council, but this will be reset to the originally approved budget, and the expenses will be allocated to the appropriate line.
That doesn't account for all of it, because I do believe that there are still funds from fund balance that is, I think you have two things happening in this adjustment.
Not in this resolution, though.
I believe you do. Because I hadn't thought about, there's the 42,000, which is the professional services side, but you're talking about a $100,000 change, not just the 40,000. So there's a $50,000 worth of fund balance adjusted roughly that has to be happening too.
In addition...
90, yeah.
At any rate, this resolution will not come back in front of us as stated.
Yeah.
If we need to approve an additional budget from fund balance, that should be identified under that Tourism Tax 15, and it would be a revenue item. There's not a revenue item on here.
Yeah, so something, something is certainly wrong, but...
So this is just, we can't, I mean, we can, we can approve it, but it won't accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
I would make a motion to table, but do I need to table? We don't need to table it, do we? We just vote no on it.
I think you just voted no on it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a different, it might be the same resolution number, but it probably won't be the same resolution number.
I think it has to be different. I think it has to be different.
We voted no on it.
So it's gone forward.
006 is...
Gone, it's no.
Didn't, yeah. So I think the national is still 007.
Okay. And that doesn't matter, I mean, we'll make sure it's legal. Item 15, Discussion and Action to Enter into Executive Session for 25OS 307B3 to discuss the purchase of real property and 25OS 307B1 to discuss FY 24-25 City of Alba and IAFF Local 3782 negotiations.
Make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Beer and a second from Mr. Winters to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Marion, this shouldn't be, but 17, Discussion and Action Regarding Purchase of Real Property, there is no action to be taken. Item 18, Action on the Fiscal Year 24-25 City of Alba and IAFF Local 3782 Negotiations, there's no action to be taken there. We do not have any business that would qualify as new business. Item 20, Remarks and Inquiries by Council Members.
I guess I have a few remarks to say. I guess it was with great deliberation that I was looking for, I guess, a more prosperous future for my family when I was offered a promotion with the Department of Defense contract that I've been fulfilling for the past about over half a year. And I guess it was too good an offer to turn down, so because of that, I will have to, this will be my last council meeting. So I appreciate you guys for letting, for serving on this board, and it is with great reluctance for the people that I represent that I'm stepping down with, so thank you.
Good luck with your future endeavors.
I would like to say, not just all on Facebook, appreciation for firefighter Burns and firefighter Lomunion, who were changed a flat tire of a...
On myself, yes.
College student in town. I think that really encompasses our town, and I, that's a great thing, and appreciation for them, and not just them, they were the ones who were caught doing something good. I know our staff does amazing things every single day, and so really for all our staff, citizens of Alba, whenever you see a city employee, whether in any department, whether you're paying your water bill, in your trash dump, or you see a police or fire officer or firefighter, you should always think them, because they are truly what makes our city run. I also think for those two, I know we have that employee recognition, something I would, as a council member, would love to see those two get some sort of recognition for that, because that definitely was something great that they did.
Yes, I agree.
So it's going to be a busy month for Mayor Parker. This also will be my last meeting. I, for several months, have had lots of changes in my personal life that have led me to needing to adjust some priorities. It's been an honor for the last seven and a half years to serve on this council. I think we've done a lot of positive things and have set this community up for a lot of success in the future. So I think you, Mayor Parker, for that first appointment back in 2016, and then for the subsequent votes of the people who've entrusted me with this responsibility. So thank you.
Good luck, Daniel.
Good luck, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, I will say, you know, thank you both for your commitment to our community. You know, Daniel, you've been a key part of what we've been doing for multiple terms now and several years, and you will be certainly missed, Taylor, you as well. I just know that the years that Daniel has had on the council will be tough to replace, any position is tough to replace, but on that note, ladies and gentlemen, please get your texting fingers ready and send me some recommendations. This would be for Ward 1, north of Church and east of 8th Street, and for Ward 2 would be north of Church and west of 8th Street, and it kind of cuts a little bit silly over by the high school, I think. I don't know the boundary over there, but I would take your recommendations, and we will try to fill those seats quickly. I will want to, you know, look at all the recommendations and have some conversations with them and all, bring back a recommendation for council approval. I had spoken to Mary Lockner after Taylor had mentioned it to me, and I called her at Walmart, and she said she thought she would be willing to...
I think Mary's would be wonderful.
All right. Any other remarks from council members? All right, we will adjourn the city council meeting and move to the utility authority meeting.
Winters?
Here.
Lart?
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3, Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 20, 2024. Item B, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $257,782.55 and Payroll Expenses of $57,466.80. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes. Here.
There's no new business, and item 6 is adjourned. I will adjourn the utility authority and open the regular Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lart?
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3, Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 20, 2024. And item B, Approval of the Minutes of the Special Meeting of March 7, 2024. Item C, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $442,458.55 and Payroll Expenses of $21,051.70.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 5, Discussion and Action to Approve City of Alba Resolution 2023-001, a resolution of the City of Alba Economic Development Authority amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget for the City of Alba.
Resolution 2024, that's 001. It reads 2023 there, but it's 2024.
You are correct. Let's take him up, but the chair of trust, I mentioned, we got to hold first. That's right. So prior to starting the fiscal year, but after approving the budget, we received a million dollars in donations that we had budgeted for this year that came in in the previous year. This budget amendment decreases the revenue amount by that amount, and then the capital outlay for the pool was increased from 125 to 271 for a total of 396, and that was due to having received actual bids instead of budget estimates.
This will make the numbers in the financial report for the AEDA much more in line with what we're actually doing. I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-001.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2024-001. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right, and we have no new business, so we will adjourn. Thank you all.